Good afternoon. It is September 29th. We're almost into the month of October, but we're catching a few more beautiful colored days and a little bit of leafage. So we are now going to have a very short special meeting at the beginning of the meeting, and then we are going to move into our work session items. Let's see, the first item is a call to order. Jim, would you like to call the roll or do the roll call?
I will do that. Counselor Benedetti?
Here.
Counselor Doyle?
Here.
Counselor Guth?
Online.
Was that a here? Did I hear that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rose?
Here.
Mayor Richards?
Here. Thank you very much. Are there any citizen comments or petitions for the special meeting? I am not seeing any today. Thank you very much. We will close that section of the meeting. We have one action item, and that is the Resolution Number 140, Series of 2025, the Addendum to the ACRA Tourism Promotion Agreement. And I will let staff introduce this one, and then we will see how we move on it. Thank you very much. Pete?
Mayor, this is in regards to the fact that we are looking ahead for the armory and redevelopment of that into a community space and trying to work with our tenant, currently ACRE, to find a good solution for them for a long-term space for their administrative needs. So with that, we need to extend the current agreement by another few months to allow everybody some more time to do some back and forth in negotiations to find a good resolution for everything. So this is just an extension of the deadlines that are in the current agreement.
Okay, thank you. There is no public comment associated with this. It's a resolution. Council members, do we have questions about this for Pete? No, we don't. I did see that Debbie Braun is here from Chamber in case we had any questions. So thank you very much, Debbie, for doing that. Is there any comments from you, Bill, online?
No, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I would accept a motion on Resolution Number 140, Series of 2025, the Addendum to the ACRA Tourism Promotion Agreement. To approve.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 140.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Jim, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes. Thank you very much. I will now take a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll on that, Mr. True?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes, thank you very much. We will now be able to move into our work session agenda. I'm sorry.
Looking at the notice for the work session, it appears we didn't notice that until 4:15 PM. So unfortunately, I think we have to take a small break and re-adjourn at 4:15.
Okay, well, that was, they were giving a little more time for that first item in case we had any questions. So sorry for the delay, but we will take a break until 4:15, which is about 12 minutes from now. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you. I would accept a motion on Resolution Number 140, Series of 2025, the Addendum to the ACRA Tourism Promotion Agreement. To approve.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 140.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Jim, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Benedetti?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Richards?
Yes, thank you very much. We will now be able to move into our work session agenda. I'm sorry.
Looking at the notice for the work session, it appears we didn't notice that until 4:15 PM. So unfortunately, I think we have to take a small break and re-adjourn at 4:15.
Okay, well, that was, they were giving a little more time for that first item in case we had any questions. So sorry for the delay, but we will take a break until 4:15, which is about 12 minutes from now. Thank you very much.[1337.16] I'm originally from Dallas, Texas, but just fell in love with it and we've stayed and just really wanted to get involved and started working with the Aspen Historical Society and just fell in love with that. And then met one of my neighbors is a woman named Barb, and she recommended that I come down and visit with you and, uh-oh, Sam knows her.
Oh, yeah. We all do.
Yeah, she's awesome.
Yeah.
So she met me in the parking lot one day. And she goes, "You gotta go do this." And I go, "Okay, I'd love to find out more about it and see if I could be an asset and any way I can serve would be terrific." But we have committed to, you know, making the change and living here full-time and in doing that, you need to be involved in what's going on and learn about it. And that's kind of why I'm here, to learn more about it and see if I could be an asset.
Thank you. Board members, Sam, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, well, say, thank you for applying. And there's two alternate positions for HBC. So the real question is, would you prefer an alternate spot in HBC or would you prefer a regular spot on a different board at this time?
Either one. Wherever there's the most need.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Do you have architectural experience in your resume or in your lifetime?
Not architectural. I've got commercial real estate experience in Dallas.
Okay.
But not per se, and that's one of the things Barb asked me. She goes, "Do you have any real, I mean, any architecture experience?" And I said, "Not really." But I am committed to, you know, I love, the more I learn about this town, the more fascinating it is. And I'm going through books and my wife is about to shoot me if I read one more book about Aspen, she's like, "Stop it." But if there's any opportunity, you know, I'm sure I could learn that, learn where it's helpful and useful and hopefully, you know, be part of a team.
Okay. Thank you very much. We do have to pay attention to certain guidelines that are within our code about the makeup of the board as a totality. And I don't have all of that with me right now about the other members to make sure we're fulfilling those obligations with people of historic preservation background and architectural background, things like that.
Totally understand.
Yep. Questions from my other board members? And we'll come to you, Bill, in just a moment and ask you if you have any questions, okay?
Yeah, he is. Hi, thanks for applying.
Sure.
I worked for the Historical Society for several years, about a decade ago. And HPC and the Historical Society frequently get confused with each other, even though the Historical Society is a nonprofit and HPC is a city commission. Have you attended or tuned into any HPC meetings recently?
I have not.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Great. And then, Bill, would you have a question? And we can go back around.
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of further dive into your line of questioning, Rachel, for Kyle. Thanks for applying, Kyle. You know, you have some commercial real estate experience, so really a lot of what the HPC board here is entail is applicants proposing to make alterations or restorations of landmark structures and wanting to sort of ask you, what's your ability to read architectural plans and elevations, understand what's being proposed? You know, not everyone provides really photorealistic 3D renderings, for better or for worse. So I think that's a critical part of serving on HPC.
Okay, I appreciate the question. I think I have what would probably be, could be described as a rudimentary understanding, not professional in any way, but my interest came from the ability and chance to maintain, you know, the spirit of Aspen, what it's been and what it has been. So, you know, I can't look at something and tell you exactly if something's an inch off, but I could definitely look at it and say, "That's not the intent. That's not what we're going for here." So hopefully that helps.
Great, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I know questions. All my questions have been answered.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask a little further. How good are you at saying no? There's a lot of pressure in.
I don't like answering that. No, I think I'm pretty good. Four children.
Yeah, I think it's always a challenge, I think, on any of our boards. As Ward used to say, pay attention to the issue, not the story that goes with it.
I understand.
About why I have to have this extra concession, as opposed to what does it really do to add value to the project? But we do put citizens in the situation of making decisions, and it can be tough decisions at times to say no, to be one of those people.
I appreciate that, yeah.
And so I just always ask.
You know, coming from Dallas, and hopefully you guys won't hold that against me, you see a lot, we have a lot of friends that have come up and they wanted to do things or they have been waiting on a permit and all that. And I think now, having been here for five years, I have a better understanding and appreciation of why no is more often the answer. And I have no issue with that.
Yeah. Okay, and it's a, it is a balancing act. I think we all know that the HBC's handbook basically are guidelines. And sometimes it's a matter of determining what is the greatest good and what is the least important, or how to implement as guidelines as opposed to rules, which we like to see followed as much as possible. But each lot, each property is usually a little different.
Certainly.
So I think those are all my questions then.
Perfect.
So thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely.
And again, we don't make decisions at this time, but we'll all think about it and give you a call back.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
One other question. Are there other boards you would be interested in?
Absolutely.
Any that come to mind?
None that come to mind. I haven't really, like I said, I just, I met Barb in the parking lot and she goes, "How was your day? I was working at Ashroft." And she goes, "Oh, you gotta do this."
Okay.
And I went, "Okay." I don't even know what it is. I mean, I looked it up and did some research, but I don't know what else is available or where else I could serve.
Okay. We'll take a look.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks. Thanks.
All right, and let's see, next individual, Chip, I think that's you for the Wheeler?
Jack.
Or is the other fellow not? Sorry, I have gotten a little confused on my computer here, pulling up the right screen.
Kids first for Jacqueline Matthews.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the pack.
Yeah, I know, I just had to go back to another message.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
I'm Jacqueline Matthews. Background, I guess, I've lived here for 21 years. I have two small kids. They both went to ELC. Christine probably recognizes me. I was on the ELC board for four years, oops, excuse me, as a treasurer. So I was interested, my kids are now out of the ELC and into the elementary school. So I'm kind of trying to find ways to continue, since I know that that's a hugely important thing, something that I benefited from, what Kids First does for our community. I'm trying to figure out a way to continue helping with that. So there's the basics.
It is really great for you to apply again and put your time out there, I think. I appreciate it, I think we all appreciate it.
Thank you.
What do you think some of the greatest challenges are that the Kids First Board has in front of it?
Housing, right, for teachers. I mean, again, my perspective and from what the annual review shows is the housing, and that was my experience with ELC. That's always the challenge, right, of being able to provide housing to teachers, to be able to keep staff and keep things consistent and safe and making sure our kids have a really excellent education system with some stability. That requires funding from Kids First, that requires the community contributing and people giving their time and their energy and trying to help find creative solutions, because it's hard to come up with that around here. So housing is a big part of it. Obviously, when I was on the board, I was the treasurer during COVID, and that was very hard. Teachers are underpaid in that particular field, as we all know. We need them desperately for people like me and most of us who work, and both parents have to work in this community for the, not all, but for the most part, at least in my experience. So we need to be able to allow parents to work and contribute to this community, but yet provide them a place that their kids are safe and are getting an education and, you know, flourishing, basically, and also teaching them how to be contributing members of this community as they grow up. So those, I think, are the big challenges, is right, how to continue to allow, pay for, to get quality teachers and housing. Those seem to be the two big things.
Thank you. Other board member questions?
Sure.
Okay, either one.
Sorry.
No, that's it. John, if you're ready?
I was, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make a comment, so I can wait.
Go ahead and ask it.
I was just gonna ask, at the city council table, we've had discussions with Kids First recently. I was just wondering if you've been following those discussions about teacher pay and other initiatives we've been working on?
I have been reading the reviews and articles in the paper. I haven't necessarily watched the city council meetings, but I'm aware. I've talked to some other people who are on the board. I'm aware of what is going on, kind of what their agenda items are, what they're trying, where they're trying to get to. Like I said, a lot of this is similar conversations we were having specifically at ELC when I was on the board. I think probably most of the individual programs are also trying to find ways within themselves to resolve some of these problems as well. I just think Kids First also has a broader reach to be able to help all of these programs, and we can see what other creative solutions maybe are on the table.
Great. And are you okay being an alternate, seeing how that's still?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
That's all? You seem great for this. Thank you so much.
Bill, do you have any questions from Zooming in?
No, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Christine?
No, thanks for applying. I think your experience on the provider side, at the board level, it will be really valuable to Kids First, so.
Yeah, I think I can ditto all those remarks. I think one of the real challenges we are going to have coming forward for Kids First, and it's an opportunity as much as a challenge, but seeing where the early childhood coalition ballot measure goes this November, and then how do we interface with them in such a way to really see merit and benefit to our programs as well as to the childcare issues around the entire region? And so I see it perhaps having a little more work than maybe it used to, because there's a possibility there's some new financial resources available and, you know, and how to keep kind of a fair balance with the support that our community generates through the sales tax and certainly acknowledging that our workforce comes from far away and that might be where the childcare is needed the most, but that we don't want to shortchange our own system up here.
Right.
So those would be important things to consider. Okay, thank you for your time and thank you for applying. I think it's really commendable of you to come back. Oh, John had a comment.
So sorry.
To go with that, and I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to say, I like filling empty board seats with people who have been here a long time and have had some experience in this very field that you're applying for.
Perfect.
And you have board experience, so really appreciate you applying.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and so that was the only applicant, as I believe, for the Kids First Board. And thank you Kids First staff for coming in to assist with this. Forms are very long.
Wheeler Board.
I know, it's Wheeler Board next. I got that right. So we have Chip Fuller reapplying and David Crowley. There's no particular order to this. David, would you like to go first?
I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you. And I will note, did everyone get a copy or just to me? I'll pass it around. There is a letter of support for you from Madeline Ossberger. I don't know if they printed out for everyone.
Thank you.
They just came in this afternoon.
I have a hard copy here as well.
Okay, it just came in this afternoon, so I wanted to make sure others have a chance to see that.
Sorry for the delay on that.
No, that's okay. This happens all the time. How are you doing?
Just fine. How are you?
Very good. And thank you for applying. And why don't you start by telling us and the audience a little bit about yourself and why you're interested with the Wheeler?
Certainly. I've been coming here for 20 years. Lived here full-time for five with my family. We're in Snowmass, although, you know, we're seemingly in Aspen every day now. There's just incredible, the plethora of events going on. The fact that the inaugural Aspen Literary Festival was the first time out of the gate, it just, I was there all three days, including the Wheeler, and I just enjoyed myself immensely. And that is, my background is, I have quite a business background, 37 years as a real estate broker in the East Coast. But again, we've been coming out here for 20 years to our second home, which became our primary home, and we're much happier for it. But I do have, you know, investments that still bring me back to the East Coast, and I have quite an experience and background, as I said, in commercial real estate. But visual arts is my passion, really. I was, in my application, you can see I was part of a group of, in my 20s, we started a movie theater in Washington DC. Was not financially viable, but boy, did I learn a lot in five years.
Yeah, I bet.
And we sort of pioneered the idea of having beer and alcohol in your, in an adjacent bar, or you could take it to the sea. And then we had food and everything 25 years ago that was basically unheard of. And then Landmark and some of the bigger chains got into it and sort of pushed us out of the way. But we enjoyed it along the way. I learned quite a bit about service to customers that are coming for a visual experience, be it the arts or movies, independent films, foreign. We ran the German Film Festival every year for five years. That was fascinating, and I definitely can see something like that at the Wheeler, not keeping an eye out. Film Fest, I adore as well, and I go to that film festival every year, in the shorts in April, and that wouldn't be a competitive thing, but I feel like there could be an expansion of the Wheeler into that venue and children's events. We have a teenager, there's just seemingly almost nothing that he's interested in, and I'd love to make suggestions to the programming people as a member of the board and see what, see where that goes as well. They're having Dr. Kaboom, that's a big, that's a big favorite of ours coming up next month. And I'm just also looking to serve more in the community. I'm a coach with AVSC, just part-time, but that, that's only 16 weekends.
Yeah.
Teaching racing, and I've got more time on my hands. I'm semi-retired, I'd like to get back to the board. As my friend Kyle Ford just left, just bumped into him, and he's, he and I are in the same situation, moved here five years ago, and we're very interested in integrating more into the community in Picken County, Aspen, Snowmass. And I've also joined, as Madeline had pointed out, I'm a big part of the Board of Elections now. I've been working every election for the last several years, and I'm enjoying that quite a bit.
That's a, that's a great service. That's something they always, always needs. Now, you mentioned in your application that you had some ideas for how to activate the lobby vault area.
Yes, as a matter of fact, it, the name of our movie theater was Vision Cinema Bistro, but then we opened Bar Noir that was, became, is more popular than even the movies. People would just come and hang out, and we had movie posters up all over the place, and it was quite the place to go. And I feel like the vault is, it's a lovely place, I enjoy it. I went to a comedy show there, but I don't think there's more than two or three activations of the space over any given year. I feel like there's a lot that could be done there, certainly. I'm not being critical in any way. I think there's a way.
No, I understand.
A way to expand that, and I've got quite a few suggestions from my background to offer. And as I said, I've probably negotiated 300 commercial leases in my career, and I could certainly help on the management side as well for the existing tenants that are there, which is so critical to the mission and the budget.
The budget.
Exactly. I've also served on nonprofit boards where we have been very concerned about the budget. The Calvary Women's Shelter in Washington DC is where I spent about 10 years volunteering my time, and that was quite a challenge in terms of budget, helping these homeless, housing-challenged people that desperately needed it. It was very, very satisfying work for me. And quite frankly, over the last five years, I haven't found my niche to offer more time. You know, it's a little with AVSC and then the election board, but, you know, that doesn't fill my whole year. I need to keep busy.
Yeah, no, I can understand that. Let me just explain that we always re-advertise all the board positions when people's terms are up. And so sometimes we have people who have served who are reapplying, and I always feel it's a little awkward to people who think it's a brand-new opening when actually they may be competing against someone else who's already served and has time and may be reapplying. So that is the case in the Wheeler Board, and it tends to be one of our most popular boards for a variety of reasons of interest. But I'd just like to put that out there, and as I said earlier, we do not make decisions at this table, but we
I understand.
Ask good questions and then see how everybody feels. I actually
I did apply, just to note, I applied a couple of years ago.
Okay. And are there any other boards you would be interested in serving on?
Frankly, I haven't, this is my top choice. I haven't even considered any other boards.
Okay.
Haven't, haven't looked, frankly.
Have you attended a Wheeler Board meeting by any chance?
I have, I have not.
You have not.
I'm sorry, I did when I applied two years ago.
Okay.
I did.
Okay, no, I understand that.
Not since that time, I didn't get the position.
Because they do have public comment and opportunity for people to bring them ideas and share ideas too, you know, separate from being a board member. And I just wanted to say, I'm from the Washington DC area originally, so familiar with a lot of those type of things, although I left a long time ago, so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big challenge to do things in DC. Other board member questions? Bill, do you want, we'll start with you this time, how about that?
Yeah, my question isn't for the applicant, but just want to make sure with staff that it's okay that he is not an Aspen resident for this position.
I think it's the only board that you
Yes, so we did attach the ordinance that establishes this board, and it is considered a non-permanent board, and so it does not have the residency requirements nor any of the other requirements that our permanent boards do. So you can appoint Mr. Crowley. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think this child is a member who doesn't, she lives in town and lives out of town too, so.
There's been other members, to my knowledge, that have not been residents of the city of Aspen that have been appointed to the Wheeler Advisory Board.
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Is that all, Bill?
That's it. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Other board member comments or questions, rather, comments? I'm off today.
All right. I'll express my appreciation for you applying. I also saw you went to UVM. I'm from Vermont, so I thought that was very fun.
That's where I grew up, and I was on the alumni board as well.
Yeah, there you go.
That's another board I didn't mention.
That's very cool. I appreciate that a ton. And no, I just, I feel bad because when people are reapplying, so long as they didn't do anything horrible, they usually get put back on the board. So I encourage you to keep trying because I think you're more than qualified, and I'm just sad there's not a spot right now, and I do wonder if there should be an alternate on the Wheeler Board because it is popular, and there are definitely people like yourself who could contribute immediately.
Yeah, thank you.
If there's no alternative, I would serve as an alternate.
Yeah, well, we don't really have alternate in the code, is what he's saying, but maybe we should take a look and expand it. I think it'd be worth talking to the Wheeler Director about that a little bit, and it's one of our larger boards to begin with.
No, I know.
But I understand that. Christine or John, any other?
Same sentiments, as previously said.
Yeah.
Yeah, same. Thank you so much for applying.
Yeah.
And if you don't get this position, please consider applying for other boards.
Yeah, and appreciate what you're doing to add into the community. I mean, that, it takes a lot, and a lot of people take their retirement years to, like my brother, just play golf and fish and
No, it's not for me.
He wouldn't give back if he had to, so appreciate that a lot. It means a lot.
I do fit that in, a lot of skiing, get my 100 days, but I still got 265 days.
That's right, and the evenings.
And the evenings, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We get the most qualified people for the Wheeler. Chip Fuller, I think you're the next applicant on this one.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hey.
Hey, welcome. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Let us know why you would like to continue with the Wheeler Board and what you think you would bring to it with a new term.
I'd like to continue because I think that I've had some success with the board, and I'm excited about the direction of the Wheeler right now with the new executive director. I can tell you a couple of things that I'm, that I'd like to work on. I'd like to increase the diversity of our programming. The biggest thing with me is the reach of the Wheeler. Like, I would like for every single citizen of this community to go to the Wheeler at least once a year. So I'd like to increase the amount of things that we're doing and the range of things we're doing, everything from big-ticket items that I think we have a supplemental request in October about to affordable, to free events, so everyone can get to the Wheeler every year. Also, I believe the vault space needs to be used better in the summertime. I don't like walking by and seeing it dark. And I think we did a good job last year with a lot, with up-and-coming artists, and I'd like to increase that, that type of programming to once or twice a week through the whole summer. The other thing is lighting for the Wheeler. If you walk around downtown Aspen, sure is a lot of retail lighting and there's a lot of hotel lighting, but the Wheeler is one of the darkest buildings in town, and I'd like to change that. And then finally, we're looking at redoing the rental rates. I think right now they're a little too complicated, and I would like to have a more of a tiered system of rental rates where local nonprofits have a very favorable rate versus other types of users.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And board member questions? Please. Oh, Bill, your hands up again, thank you.
Sure.
Wasn't a minute ago.
Thank you. Chip, thanks for all your service on this board. Led it well for a long time, and we appreciate it. I wanted to ask, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the Music Festival uses the Wheeler for a significant portion of the summer. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's a long-term contract.
Do you have any idea when that is up?
10 or 15 years from now? I think it comes up every 20 years, and it was just...
If it didn't have so much term left, what would your position on that be? Assuming it didn't have so much term left.
I would love to be able to, for the Wheeler staff, executive director and staff, to program the Wheeler year-round. That being said, the Music Festival does put on an amazing program there in the summertime. I wish there was a way that both of them can work at the same time. I think that there's a possibility that that could happen.
Interesting.
Great.
Yeah.
That was my only curiosity. I was just wondering if that's still appropriate for today's Aspen, and I didn't know when that agreement terminated, but good to know. Thank you for informing me. I have no other questions. I appreciate your service.
I hope we're all here when it comes up in 15 years.
Yeah, and I'm not sure I have the exact details, but I am under the impression that that contract was entered into with MAA when they helped fund the rebuilding of the Wheeler Opera House after the fire quite a while ago. So they stepped up before there was really other resources. So that's kind of why it is. But it'd be nice to talk to them about how do we integrate more, or if people can see some of the dress rehearsals or rehearsals and get a little more activity out of it. I would agree with that.
And just to say that they are very accommodating. Like, we have a good relationship with the ship in the summer, with them in the summer, and, you know, putting events on in the vault and that kind of stuff, they are very accommodating for that, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Chip? Christine?
I have a question. The Wheeler Rett Fund, everyone wants a piece. Most recently, I think the school district was eyeing it for some upgrades to their theater. How do you handle those conversations currently?
You know, since we expanded the use of the Rett, there has been less of those conversations, at least with me, which is great, because the Wheeler Advisory Board doesn't make decisions on that. City Council makes decisions on that. So there's not a lot that I can add to that. I think we have a great process in place for nonprofits and arts-related uses to dip into that Rett money. I'd love to see it increased on big real estate years, and it has over the last few years, so that's great. I think it's a great process and a great system in place. The one thing is like the big capital projects, like what you were saying, like potentially at the high school or stuff like that. That, you know, there isn't really a great mechanism for that, so it would be interesting to put something in place for that. But like I said, a lot of it depends on a revenue that has been growing every year or most years, but isn't guaranteed in the future. So I've always believed in, you know, in the Wheeler first for that. And as long as those needs are met, hopefully the rest of the community can participate.
Thanks for replying. Yeah, just on this topic really quickly, I have mentioned in our last discussion about grants that I'd like to develop some sort of capital program for the Wheeler Rett that would be very limited and very closely contained, because otherwise, it was only a few years ago, this like, we're going to do a ballot initiative to take it all. And I feel that people will continue to take a run at it no matter what unless we have something set up. So we could set up a very small percentage of the total project amount. That has to be a local match, that whoever applies, and there's only one grant at a year, and that if you've received one, you can't apply for 10 more years. I mean, this is just broad terms for us to start to think about so that we don't deplete the fund and that we establish clearly a base level of reserve funding for the Wheeler so that should there be years where it's close to that or projected to dip under, we would say, no capital grants this year. You know, so it has to be in balance with everything else that we know going around. But we would like to try to, working with the Wheeler Board, with the Grants Committee, with Council, financial committees, to see if there's some way we can set that up so that it's not just left wide open for people to think, I'm going to pluck this cherry first before somebody else gets there, and set up a protocol, so.
I agree with all that, and I, you know, I'd like to further that as well.
Yeah, thank you. John?
Yeah, I just want to say, thanks for reapplying, Chip. Your knowledge of the building and how it operates are really came through tonight. And I agree with you, I think the Wheeler is like a gem of our town that no other ski area or really town in Colorado has. And I think it should be showcased a little bit with some lighting that is appropriate for our Dark Sky Initiative.
That's right. It's a little tricky, but I agree with that. Any other?
Just thank you for reapplying. I think you've done a great job.
The one thing I will mention, just as a comment, and it's more something to keep our eyes on as opposed to what has to happen or anything, but I had in the past gone to a couple of different New Year's Eve parties that they had there. And I would like to kind of track what the attendance is on the magic show this year for families and see about what we really want to do next year, because locals have been priced out of celebrating New Year's in their own town. And, you know, it's gotten to where you want to go into just a basic bar would be a $100 cover charge, and it's absurd. It's actually absurd. And so the Wheeler events that have been at the New Year's Eve with a band of some sort, doesn't necessarily have to have the food thrown in, but has always been really well-received by the community who are very much wanting to celebrate New Year's Eve but aren't going to buy a $1,500 ticket to somebody's gala or $250 dinner menu and things like this. So I think, I think we need to consider that for next year and just take a look at how many families really come to a magic show, which I might, because I like magic, on New Year's Eve versus being able to have something different. So it's just to think about it, nothing's a direction.
It's a good suggestion. We have been focusing on family events for New Year's for the last few years. Perhaps there's a way to do both.
Yeah, maybe there's an afternoon show and early evening or something like that.
I do think if there was an event at the Wheeler for $100 on New Year's Eve, it would be absolutely packed.
Yeah, yeah, or 125.
And receive very, very well.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, well, we'll see where that goes. And again, thank you for your time and your contributions thus far.
Thank you.
Very good. I think that was our last interview for today. Double check, yes. Double check with Sam. He's like my professional assistant now. I really appreciate you being there. Okay, so we will transition now to the staff presentations for this item, for this work session tonight.
This is exciting.
All right.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Tessa Schreider, the Environmental Health and Sustainability Manager. I'm here with...
Bonnie Mookie-Girwin, the Chief Building Official.
Ben Anderson, Community Development Director.
We're here for a pretty ro... Oh.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, and Tyler.
Tyler Kristof, Deputy City Manager.
Thanks.
Glad I'm not the only one who does that.
Right. We're here for a pretty robust work session tonight on building electrification code updates and some policy questions for Council. And so the request of Council this evening, there we go, is to arrive at Council direction for the creation of possible amendments to city code regarding the electrification of the built environment. So these code amendments would touch various code across city municipal code, including engineering code, building code, potential utilities code. And the discussion today is intended to be high-level to gather feedback and guidance from Council on these really big policy questions. The purpose of tonight is not necessarily to dive super-deep into the weeds, but rather, if we get direction from Council at a big, or at a higher level, we would come back with a lot more developed plans and solutions and would be able to dive very deeply at those, at that time. And so there are three key drivers for today's discussion. The first is we've gotten a significant amount of feedback from the community, the development community, that we have an opportunity to streamline some of our processes and remove barriers to voluntary electrification of buildings. The second driver is Council's climate goals on greenhouse gas emissions reductions. And then the third driver, but really important, is some updates that the state is making for building and energy code that the city will have to consider when we bring updates to our building and energy code in the future. And so with direction provided by Council tonight, we will come back, staff would come back with potential code changes across these various codes, again with developed, very deeply developed solutions. So today's presentation will go from summary and background across this entire topic, and then the way that we have divided up these six policy questions is in two buckets. So bucket one would be under removing barriers to electrification in city code. We have three policy questions here. We would then go into the state code background, which Bonnie will share a bit more on, and then we'll enter into the next three policy questions that fall under the category of preparing for the state building and energy code updates, which will fall in 2026 for both new and existing buildings.
Sounds good.
So some summary background, big picture. Why electrification matters? So 47% of our community's emissions are from the built environment. And while that number is not necessarily unusual, perhaps for a resort community, the Aspen context for here is different in that we are incredibly lucky to have two utilities, electric utilities, Aspen Electric and Holy Cross Electric, that will both be 100% renewable by 2030. Aspen Electric has been fully renewable since 2015, and Holy Cross will be fully renewable by 2030. What this means is that by 2030, most of our emissions from the built environment will come from gas appliances and mechanical equipment, which means that the city has a unique opportunity to achieve pretty significant gains on our emissions reductions through electrification specifically. There's various aspects of previous Council direction that touch on this topic. So the first is the Aspen Sustainability Action Plan. There are several aspects of objectives and action items in this plan that touch on code and electrification incentives. The second is in 2023, when the Buildings Team brought the 2021 Energy and Building Code Updates to Council, Council directed staff to create an electrification task force. This task force's charge was to conduct research and come back with a developed plan on how Aspen could electrify. And a lot of the policy questions that you see here tonight are direct feedback from that group. What's not listed here, but equally as important, is that a pretty awesome cross-departmental group of staff also got together with the electrification task force across several departments to ask some of these same questions in a really comprehensive way for how does our code talk to each other and what are our opportunities for efficiency in making changes to code across codes and not just within one bucket of code. Building IQ overlaps with electrification in multiple ways, but electrification itself is a pretty standalone topic, and many of the questions at Council's, for Council Reflection Tonight, are a precursor to creating building performance standards and are relevant even if Council does not consider building performance standards. In addition, these are a direct feedback, these policy questions are direct feedback from the Building Performance Standards Stakeholder Committee. So we're responding to various levels of stakeholders that have said that this is one of the first steps they would like to see as we're starting to talk about electrification in the built environment. Bonnie will share a bit more about Colorado State Code Changes later in the presentation. And then finally, community demand and feedback. So we have received a significant amount of feedback from the development community and from folks in architecture, mechanical engineers, that the city has a huge opportunity to remove barriers to voluntary electrification. So we have buildings that, not required by code, would like to go all-electric and are meeting some roadblocks, and we would like to get out of the way as the city on enabling that, because that's the, that is what we would like to see. All right. So diving into the first bucket of policy questions, removing barriers to electrification in city code. So before we get started, just to outline some challenges and opportunities in this space, the first is challenges around electric equipment and equipment size. Mechanical equipment related to electrification, but also related to just general building operations, is getting bigger. And so especially in certain luxury features in buildings require additional mechanical equipment to run, which necessitates like a larger area to house this equipment on-site. Related to this, we're seeing frequent instances of competing demands for lot areas in, you know, a specific building. So as you all are aware, lots in Aspen are often restricted, especially in the core. And the builds often want to maximize building square footage and trying to make space for things like mechanical equipment, trash enclosures, and then other outdoor amenities. And finally, under opportunities, removing barriers to electrification in city code is a direct response to community feedback that we have received. It allows us as staff to improve our process and be really responsive to what we have heard from community members, especially in development services. And it really allows us to deliver customer service outcomes, which is always our goal. Okay. Our first policy question, under the bucket of removing barriers in our city code, pertains to heightened setback restrictions.
And let me clarify. Were you going to go through all these questions in the full presentation and then ask these questions again? Or you, and we're not really asking them to be answered right now. We're just going through the full presentation.
We can do either. How we have set it up is to have discussion one by one in these policy questions, because they kind of do relate and build on each other. So I will go through the background, I'll end with the policy question, and then leave it open for Council discussion.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our first policy question is on height and setbacks. And so currently, equipment that's not limited to electrification equipment, but certainly inclusive of it, like heat pumps are getting larger, especially in height for heat pumps are getting taller. And current code is restrictive for this type of equipment on buildings. And so due to Aspen's tight lots, setbacks in roofs are often the only remaining area to put equipment in. According to feedback from local builders and engineers, the current equipment height restrictions on the roof of 72 inches is a barrier for a lot of these high-efficiency heat pumps, which are almost all but exceeding that 72-inch limit. The height restriction also limits effective cooling systems, like commercial buildings, for example, for like large cooling towers on buildings. In addition, setbacks of 15 to 25 feet from lot lines on roofs are hard on really thin buildings for engineers to try to set that equipment within that setback, and again, with the height restriction. So we're looking at kind of two different, but very overlapping and related restrictions that are making the positioning of this equipment difficult under current code. Workarounds for these solutions for developers and for builders are often really costly and just generally complicated and challenging. And potential solutions for staff to investigate in this particular policy question include requiring new construction to locate equipment outside of the setbacks, so not within setbacks, and providing additional flexibility for existing buildings. So you'll see this as a theme across our policy questions, that there's various considerations that we would make for new construction versus existing buildings, just because there's challenges, different challenges with both of those kinds of development. Staff would also consider topics like line of sight. So this photo is a good example of line of sight of equipment. It has a screen on it, but this is a part of our consideration as we are making adjustments to code. So with that background, our first policy question for Council discussion is, is Council supportive of adjusting height and setback restrictions to accommodate high-efficiency electric equipment?
Okay. Let me ask if I've missed something, but this is different than the question about putting them into the right-of-way. And so if this is allowed, there won't need to be a right-of-way question. This is why I was kind of asking, they seem to be a little interrelated. Ben?
I think this first question is about on property.
Right.
And I think Tessa explained it well, but equipment's getting bigger.
Bigger.
People are wanting new equipment that isn't there currently, and we're limited on a piece of property about where those things can be located.
Unless there's some changes to the code.
That's exactly right. And so we have accommodations for all of this stuff, but because of the size expansion for what this new equipment is, our current code is often prohibitive or very inflexible in response to...
Okay, so we're really talking about this side yard setbacks and the backyard setback and things from that, from other property lines?
And setback from edge of roof.
And edge of roof.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps a lot. Let me ask a question that's kind of more broad. Is there a noise issue related to these that changing the side yard setback might affect the next-door neighbors significantly?
It's a great question. Do you want me, oh, I can do it. So yes, this is overlapping discussion, and the cross-departmental group that was discussing this as a topic had noise as an overlapping code consideration. So in, when looking at equipment, equipment, yes, further from setbacks, and yes, in different positioning, roof or otherwise does make a difference in the noise factor, and this should be considered. There are solutions, and there are solutions, as we have seen, kind of deployed in the community, but they are an overlapping consideration. There's not necessarily a policy question around noise at this time, but it is a consideration. Excuse me, consideration.
No, I was just trying to think through, usually in the, well, the lots are all different, but some are five-yard setback from this house, and then the next-door neighbor would have a five-yard setback, so there's a 10-foot gap between the two units. If you were able to change the side yard setbacks, would it be to allow it to go closer to the property line or just allow more... to the property line or just allow more forgiveness for it adjacent to the building in which it's serving?
I think both of those things could be true. I think that the overarching word that I think is probably present in all of these policy questions is, and the reason why we're asking them is that there's trade-offs in all of this stuff.
Right.
And so I think even on this question, we were just talking about physical, we're going to be seeing more mechanical equipment on rooftops than we currently see, and neighbors are going to probably have to experience bigger mechanical equipment in setbacks on some equation, on some occasions, depending on the lot circumstances. But I think in terms of noise, for both of those questions, whether it's stuff up on the roof or stuff in a residential side yard, as you just identified, there's potential noise implications for this that I think we have to be very cognizant of that are certainly going to be trade-offs of this question. Certainly, staff's intent is to find a balance in that.
Right.
But as we pursue this, if electrification is with the state mandates and, you know, I think our local choices that we have, there are going to be trade-offs in all of those questions.
Okay. Well, I would imagine that, that there's trade-offs in everything we do. It makes me think, should there potentially, if there is a new code, develop to have some noise standards so that any equipment must come within a certain envelope of noise? And for me, it was kind of, if we're going to start using the side yard setbacks, it can't be with the intention of putting it as close to my neighbor as possible as opposed to just a little more leeway on the side of my building that's already to its max. And so, you know, we'd have to be clear with that sort of thing. I'll let that go and then see others' comments or questions on this one. Bill has his hand up, so he can go first.
Thanks, Rachel. You know, overall, I'm supportive of this, but I think we need to be careful about how we think about it. And there's a few sort of sub-points I want to bring up. Firstly, I think that rooftop and on-grade are two very different things, and I want to make sure that our code treats those very differently and contemplates them very differently. I don't know if it currently does or does not, but given the conversations that we're having, I think they are very different. And potentially in different areas of the city, they should, those two things should be different as well. So as we adjust these things and contemplate these things, I ask that you consider that. Secondly, particularly as it relates to rooftop equipment, I think that our screening requirements and strategies have not been successful to date. This photo, I think, is a good example of that. These faux boxwood-type hedges are just incongruent with Aspen in a lot of ways. We don't allow hedges in Aspen, and yet we're sort of, we have examples of it here. I've been personally required to put lattice screening around mechanical equipment on very tall rooftops that we all knew was going to last no more than a few months, and yet it was a requirement to get the permit signed off on. So I ask that you also look at screening and maybe that, maybe our rules for parapet walls and heights of parapet walls and permanent screening walls and things like that need to be adjusted in tandem with this adjustment of the equipment itself. Does that make sense?
They are taking notes vigorously, Bill. Keep going.
I think that was really it on this topic, because I'm fine with it. I get the need for it. You know, I live with this stuff real time. I know that it's bigger. I know that it's taller. I know that you can't just tip something on its side because we don't have the height allowances for it. So I totally understand the issue here, and I appreciate it being brought to us, but I think we want to do it carefully and thoughtfully.
Okay, very good comments. Okay, back to the table. Sam?
Yeah, thank you. Generally supportive, but I do wonder about things I don't know being the adverse effects from this, as Rachel and Bill have brought up. I was wondering a couple of things. First, are planning and zoning in HPC gonna get their eyes on this? Okay.
Yeah, I think as we go through the questions, this is certainly, lives primarily in the land use code. But I think as you're going to, as we go further, we have utilities policies, we have engineering policies and standards. So there is certainly stuff outside the land use code that these things are going to touch on. This one is particularly, you know, the set of solutions to this set of questions live in the land use code. And certainly, P&amp;Z and HPC will have purview over that before they come to you for ordinance.
Okay. That makes me feel more comfortable about it moving forward. And I mean, that's just where I'm at, is wanting outreach, because I do feel like I can tell you my values, saying that electrification is a good thing, but I also, but then I just don't know, adjusting height and setback restriction, if that's going to be a good thing for the people that live here and work here and own here. So the outreach and the P&amp;Z and HPC review is definitely important to me to weed out all the adverse effects that could come from something like this.
Yes. John and then Christine.
Are we actually answering the policy questions right now?
Yeah.
Okay, short answer is yes. I do have some mild concerns about rooftop sightlines, but that is less of a concern to me than doing whatever we can do to accelerate away from using fossil fuels.
Thank you, John. Christine?
Yes, short answer is also yes. I echo similar concerns about, I think, just the city making and adjusting its own rules to make things bigger and the optics of that. And so the conversations with the community about how and why that's happening are important. And then second, setback restrictions, I'm sure there's a number of reasons why they are all set or were designed and what they were for. Safety comes to mind for me on this as well. If we're minimizing that, what are we trading off potentially from that perspective? That, thanks.
Very good. Bill has an additional comment. Go ahead, Bill.
Thanks very much. Yeah, just one more example that I was thinking of, that I thought of after I spoke, which was relating to on-grade setback restrictions. And one of the current restrictions on grade is that you can't alter the grade in the setback more than 30 inches up or down in the current land use code. And I'm wondering, you know, what's so bad about going deeper and burying equipment below grade that you can't really see? You know, I don't think to anyone's naked eye, the difference between a 30-inch hole and a 50-inch hole is very obvious, especially if you have, you know, safety grading over it. So I think that's one more thing I'd ask you to look at as you're examining this, is going up, I understand the visual issues with going down, not so much.
Yeah. Certainly a topic, I think, to think about. I will say, just because I think it speaks to a lot of these issues, we're finding that a lot of this mechanical equipment on the rooftop has to be set up on pedestals that are at least a foot off of the roof before you even get to the equipment. But I think in, we found similar things in the setbacks. We have an allowance for 30 inches below and 30 inches above grade, just as Councilmember Guth described. We're finding out from manufacturer specs on heat pumps particularly, that you can't go below grade.
They have to be above.
They have to, they have to be above grade. And we've had some folks run into warranty issues with manufacturers by going below grade. So I think to your point, Bill, I think that there's some really interesting intersection of technical requirements of the equipment with these kind of physical limitations in our code. And that's what we're trying to respond to in a thoughtful way, because the technological constraints of some of this equipment are very real.
Great, thank you.
Very good. My answer is yes as well. I really appreciate Bill's comments about how the things on the roof look and what we can do. Personally, I really think it's important, as much as we can, and whether it's the right-of-way question or this question, is that they are designed to accommodate these things to begin with, as opposed to, here's my beautiful design I really want, now where can I stick on the energy stuff like Mr. Potato Head? And that's okay, the city's changed the side yard setback, so we'll push it out there. I mean, I'm a little more nervous about just for new construction that, it's almost like it shouldn't be allowed for new construction. For new construction, you should use your building envelope. For old construction, we have to deal with what's there. And so when this comes back around, I'd like to see a more thorough discussion about what applies to who and why. And that's number one. The second is, I think it will need to have, within this code, again, throughout a few of these areas, special consideration for historic preservation properties. You know, they're just not the same. And so, you know, we should know that from the beginning and figure out ways to really kind of accommodate that. I don't know that I see anything different with affordable housing, but I do think it's worth taking a look just to make sure. Ben and I have a conversation about heat tape not long ago, and, you know, he said now that the code's been in place from coming from the old council, they might like to take a few refinement looks at that. Okay? And so the other kind of broader question to all these, and I think we could answer it later, it doesn't need an immediate answer, but what do we project our increased generation needs or purchase needs for electric power would be when we hit certain benchmarks in the course of this program? Whether it's a five-year or 10-year out, I just want to make sure, and I know you're kind of watching those things already, but, you know, it could be an incredibly large increase with a lot of success in our plans. So, yeah, I don't know if you want to address that now, but I think it's something we really need to have when we get to the table of passing this.
Sure, Rachel, that's something that the utilities department looks closely at and operates kind of on a decade-ahead planning basis. Generally, we expect 30% to 40% increase in purchase power costs when full buildout of electrification and EVs occur locally. But obviously, that's anyone's guess as technology changes, and hopefully, there's other efficiencies that we can find. But that's generally what we've been looking at and been updating our grid to accommodate that, as council is aware with our cable and conduit projects.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure no one department's getting too far ahead of the others. Thank you. Next item, I guess.
So in summary, what we heard is support to come back on this topic with a variety of considerations, including shielding visibility and really intentionality around the various types of buildings to make sure that we're being accommodating and also asking the right questions for siding, especially for new construction.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you know, you may, as you finalize all this and decide that some of them may not be automatic, and they could need special review to determine if you can have that setback changed or not. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Our second policy question relating to your comment earlier is, pertains to site planning and dimensional requirements. So new buildings, to your point, do not always plan for adequate space for, on property for mechanical equipment. And this can result in negative outcomes, such as equipment located in the setbacks or a budding on neighbor's property. Existing buildings, alternatively, often have site constraints, as we have discussed, and often need additional flexibility when they are making upgrades to their mechanical equipment for various reasons. So for potential solutions, considerations include requiring new construction to allocate mechanical equipment on property with a minimum use of setbacks. And for existing buildings, creating new standards that integrate flexibility when needed and when feasible. Picking County has a similar standard for this currently in the building code, so they require 2% or 50 square feet, whichever is greater, of the floor area to be allocated for mechanical equipment specifically. So as an example, the site plan that you're seeing on the right of the screen here is a proposed new single-family residence, and this illustrates the competing interest within the setback that we mentioned earlier. So oftentimes, we are, in this particular plans, we see window wells, a spa. Often, we see trash enclosures as a consideration, not in these plans. But to note, their initial site plans do not indicate where their three required heat pumps will be located, which exceed the height and size limitations set by underlying zoning. And so this is just an example of kind of some of the things that our development team is seeing. Considerations for potential code changes include requiring developers to allocate space for that mechanical equipment early in the planning process. So this will ensure that this is integrated into plans in a way that has the least visual impact. And then again, flexibility for existing buildings. So with that, our policy question for council is, is council supportive of changing site planning requirements for new and/or redeveloped construction to accommodate electric equipment space needs?
We'll go with Bill first. He's online. Go ahead.
Thanks very much, Rachel. I think this question does not come with enough context, and you have to be very knowledgeable on design and planning processes to be able to answer this question well. And I think that there's some questions and some details that I would request that you talk about further so that my colleagues on council can understand this. You know, one item is the requirement to locate your electrical transformer if it needs to be upgraded within the property lines. So where are those supposed to go? We're already shrinking the ability to develop there. Another thing I'd like you to talk about is the fact that Picking County generally doesn't have 3,000 and square, and 6,000 square-foot lots. Most of the lots are significantly larger, so a requirement that's mirroring what Picking County has is not a reasonable comparison, I don't think. You know, you can't locate a lot of this equipment on the street-facing side of the house already, which I actually think is a good thing, but it's limiting your options. So I guess I'd request that you talk about all those things that I just brought up, because I don't think there's enough context in the way you phrase the question. Thanks.
Yeah. Well, Bill, I think you just explained some of the issues. If you guys have something further to add at the table?
No, I think, I think Councilmember Gis is correct. I mean, it's a complex set of questions. I will say that the fundamental distinction here is whether or not we want to create, and I think we can have lots of debate about what they actually are, but I think putting some site planning requirements on new construction, and that term redeveloped in green really has some specific meaning in the land use code. We're talking about properties that sort of cross, you know, demolition in some way are fairly major, you know, new projects on a particular piece of, ultimately, new projects on a piece of property. So right now, we don't have any requirements for these kinds of accommodations of this kind of equipment in the site planning process or site planning requirements for new construction. And the question is, should there be some? To acknowledge that we think it's essential, particularly moving forward with larger equipment, that's likely going to be part of this property's future, whether they be transformers or whether they be heat pumps or whether they be other sort of equipment, do we need to find space that's not sitting in their setbacks? It's not sitting in a place that has sort of impact to the public right-of-way? So it's that fundamental question. I think there's a lot of devil in the details here to Councilmember Goose's point, but I think it's just that fundamental question of, should new construction have to think about this stuff when they're doing their site planning?
Very good. Thank you. Bill, would you like to respond?
Thank you for the response. Ben, I would say that we already have so many elements of the land use code that makes you think about this kind of stuff early. And just because there's this one example that you found where they didn't think about it adequately, doesn't mean that everyone doesn't. And I think that the proof's in the pudding, you know, whether that's because of comments that they receive on their, on their permit applications or because they have been contemplating it early. When you walk around town, you don't see a lot of this equipment in your face. And we don't hear a lot of neighbor complaints about this equipment being in the setbacks adjacent to their property lines. So this seems like a problem that doesn't need solving to me, and I'm not supportive of adding more layers of bureaucracy and complexity to this issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Other council members want to weigh in on the question?
I think my comments are going to be similar through, as we go out, throughout this work session, as far as just like, I am listening to Bill, listen to others. I just don't know the adverse consequences. Bill obviously brings up ones that are thought-provoking, but the general sentiment is I don't know enough. I think you're doing a great thing by heading towards electrification, but the same ... time, I look forward to the rigorous process that this has to go through with HBC, P&amp;Z, and hopefully, with a lot of outreach that you do to get to a final result that you think is good for everyone. Just to say again, I'm always looking for symbiotic relationships where it's good for you and good for me. If not, it's good for you and it doesn't hurt me. I'm hoping this sort of thing leads to something where it's not an adverse effect on anyone or at least minimalized to such a small degree. So, those are my general sentiments as we go through this, and it's the same thing for this, as far as just like, I don't know enough, but hopefully, we do get to the bottom of it through the rigorous process, and I'm glad we're starting the process now. So, thank you.
Yeah. Christine?
Point of clarification. How is this different from the state, the forthcoming state code that requires new buildings to install infrastructure and space and have space for electrical systems?
The state code will require either electric-ready infrastructure. This is addressing how we can make changes to our existing land use code to accommodate those changes that are coming with new types of equipment because of electrification.
But if we said no to this, it would happen, we'd have to potentially do it anyway?
The equipment would be located where it is currently allowed to be located in the land use code, which is, right now, we're hearing from a lot of developers that that's just really challenging to accommodate. So, we're looking for solutions on how to change the current code to make accommodations.
Okay, thank you. John?
I'm going to say yes. Any ability we can give to developers to allow them a little wiggle room to electrify, I support that.
I'm supportive as well, and the thing is, I just don't want to see people having to do a lot of redos, you know, and you don't want it to get, you know, if someone knows I need to have this in my plan to begin with, and we have sent a notice and description of the new code to all the architects we know who work in town or who do projects, it's just really more of a heads-up that, think about this before you finish the beautiful masterpiece, and it needs to be worked into the masterpiece. But how many times do people come back and complain that they had to go through the process twice, or now I got to wait for a new P&amp;Z hearing because I've changed this part of my plan? And the more we can let people know what needs to be in your plan upfront, the less we're going to see that. And so, or someone send it back to say it's incomplete or whatever happens. So, I just feel like this is setting the table appropriately for saying, this is what the expectation is on a demolition, total renewal, or a empty lot development. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to say that in order to maximize your residents, we're going to have to start sticking things into the right-of-way and the roads, the alleyways. And that's what a result of this is, when somebody comes in afterwards and says, I just don't have a place to put it. And, you know, we've seen it with our hotels and retail, when they don't really think about how much space they're going to need for trash or where they're going to park their hotel shuttles and things like this. And it's just unfair to force those impacts onto the nearby residents or onto the streets. So, and, you know, I know you guys will work through some of the issues that go with this, but I agree with the direction.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next one.
All right. Our third and final policy question under the bucket of removing barriers to existing code pertains to transformers in the right-of-way. Increased electric demand from the state code and also as more people voluntarily go all-electric is going to require larger capacity and likely additional transformers to serve this increased demand. We've received feedback from developers that transformer siding specifically is one of the biggest challenges that developers face. There's a lot of requirements of where transformers can be placed for safety and et cetera. And carve-outs for transformers can, depending on the project, can be a barrier. In addition, the number of physical connections within each transformer has a limit, and so, once it reaches its maximum number of connections, an additional transformer is needed in order to provide additional capacity or service upgrade. And so, for some buildings, there isn't sufficient number of space on properties for additional transformers, should they need an additional transformer to serve additional energy. Currently, the Aspen engineering standards do not allow for transformers in the right-of-way. Locating transformers in the right-of-way has trade-offs, including potentially impeding current or hindering future allowances for pedestrians, bikes, bike pad, and utility corridors. And so, considerations for this potential item under, so for requiring new construction to locate transformers in, not in the right-of-way, but on-site. And then, for existing buildings, developing, again, detailed kind of work with engineering for some circumstances for existing buildings that have no other options, creating a different kind of variance to engineering standards with specific site constraints that would require the potential of transformers being located elsewhere. So, with that, our third policy question for council is, is council supportive of allowing transformers to be placed in the right-of-way in certain circumstances, certainly not all?
Okay. I just want to get a little more information about transformers before we weigh in on this entirely, and you have an example in front of us online. Do they all have to be on a raised concrete pad? Oh, we have a transformers expert approaching the table.
Good evening.
And just introduce yourself.
Erin Loughlin, the utilities director. So, happy to answer some more detailed questions on the electric side. In short, the answer is, current standards do require our transformers, whether it's single-phase or three-phase, to be pad-mounted.
Okay.
Pad-mounted. We have some old ones that are out there that may not be on the vaults that are typical, and when we come across those, they're required to be brought up to standard. Usually, the pad needs to be about six inches above finished grade.
Okay.
And that's standard.
And does this picture look like sort of the newer, larger transformer boxes, or does this look like kind of the older, smaller ones?
That is a newer transformer. For context on the capacity size, larger-capacity transformers actually are on the same footprint of a vault of our current maximum-capacity transformers. So, the capacity can be increased without actually expanding the vault size it needs to sit on, up to a point. I think up to a point that our department would be willing to consider expanding our current cap on. So, the vault size is what is measured for easement requirements from the edges of the vault. So, that capacity increase is not actually a limitation as far as easement size goes.
Okay. And then, how far away from a building or structure must transformers be located or must they?
I'm going, I might have to defer to some of our standards from buildings. As far as clearance goes, we need to have three feet clear on the sides and the back measured from the vault, and we need to have 10-foot clear in front of the front for all transformers.
And that'd be measured from a non-combustible wall.
From a non-combustible wall. Okay, thank you. I just thought it'd be good to have the kind of geography of them as we discuss it. I've also worried about, when we talked about right-of-way, I tend to think of alleys and particularly in the downtown, and maybe there's other right-of-ways you're considering like the Rio Grande Trail. But what I'm wondering is, can they be placed in such a way that it doesn't impede traffic and the delivery traffic of the trucks if they're in the right-of-way in the commercial core? And is that an area where you're looking to need newer transformers?
I think if you're referring to the downtown alleys, I don't think we could allow transformers to encroach into the driving surface any further than current encroachments occur because we would limit traversability of those right-of-ways. I think there are probably other instances of right-of-ways, like you mentioned, trails, adjacent side lots, stuff like that, that we might be able to consider under certain circumstances. Alleys would be a difficult one to do that in.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. I think that when this really comes back, we really get, need to look at a little bit of a map that goes with it to talk about where they could go or they couldn't go, or, you know, maybe it's overlay of where you think the need will be the most, and then we can think about where they would go or what that would mean.
Yeah, and for council, if I may, I think this issue is being brought before you tonight because this is a question that is raised by developers and your constituents from time to time, and we felt like it was important to give you those balanced choices tonight as part of this presentation.
Yeah, no, and I agree with that. I think this is all about preparing for the future, and so, that's why I'm kind of saying, what do we think, what areas would really start to need this or need it soonest and how we go about it, similar to our capacity to generate power? So, let me turn it to Bill now. He has his hand up patiently, waiting. Thank you, Bill. Your turn.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I thought those were great questions, Rachel, and great dialogue. And there's some additional context that I'd like to share with the rest of you, and transformers are something that is, and transformer policy and asset is something that's frustrated me for a while, and I do understand both sides of the sort of argument, but, you know, transformers are not something that's dedicated or exclusive to any given property. So, if it's determined that a new transformer needs to be placed as a result of whatever you might be doing, whether that's upgrading your existing property to be electrified, more electrified, or whether that's a big renovation, or whether it's a new development, or some other thing I'm not contemplating right now, the requirement is that that transformer be placed on your private property. But that doesn't mean it's only for you. It means anyone else can use that transformer in the future, and it might serve all of your neighbors, yet it's encroaching on your private property. And I sort of have a fundamental issue with that and the fact that you're the only one who has to pay for that transformer upgrade, just because you happen to be first. So, for example, if there are two houses that are being built more or less simultaneously, and either one of them will trigger an upsizing of a transformer, whoever applies for that transformer first gets stuck with the entire bill. I also don't think that's fair. And the electric department will consider what they know is coming for the future upsizing of the adjacent property when they tell you what size that transformer has to be, and again, the first person to pull that permit has to pay that bill. So, you know, short answer is, yes, I'm supportive of this policy question, but I think it should be a bigger policy question of how we sort of deal with transformers in general in this city. It doesn't feel right and fair to me, and it never has.
Thank you for that, Bill. I think it is something we certainly should try to take a look at. It seems that if one person has paid that cost and then others want to tap into that increased capacity, they should have to pay a share to get into that new transformer. I just don't know what we need to do with code policy to legitimize that, but it looks like a cleanup because electrification is coming, and we need to take care of the fairness issues. So, thank you for that. Other comments from the table? John, Christine, we'll come down to the side.
I just want to say, yes, I supported it. I remember when Crested Butte passed their all-electric ordinance, and I was super excited to employ that here, and I was told that the problem was, we didn't have the transformer capacity to handle that, and now it's being addressed. So, this is an easy yes for me.
Okay, thank you. Christine?
Yeah, this one seems like we sort of have to say yes in a way, but now I'm really interested in transformer policy and just, how many do we have? How, can we walk down that path, and maybe that's something to come back when we have this conversation further?
Yeah, that might be a small detail we could get during the budget hearings, of how many transformers we have, how many you feel are aged and need to be replacing now or soon, and vice versa.
We have 264 right now, but we can, we can come back with more details during budget sessions.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Are you done, Christine? Yeah. Okay.
I did have one question. It was about, shoot, now I've lost my train of thought.
It'll come back around.
Yeah, well.
It'll come back around. Sam?
Oh, that was it.
It was Sam. He queued it up for you.
Sorry. It was, you said, now, if they do go into a right-of-way, who decides where they go?
That would be.
Not that I want to be the decider, I just, I'm wondering who it's going to be.
Yeah, that would be determined as part of the process, and again, the recommendation at the current level for staff is to apply variances in very specific circumstances that require them. It would be a case-by-case scenario, and again, kind of the best site location for that property.
Yeah, I think we would apply all the other safety standards to it, make sure that there wasn't a collision hazard, there was adequate space for traversability, snow storage, the easement size that Erin mentioned, and then see how that works with site conditions.
Great. Thanks for the answer, and sorry to interrupt.
And it would also seem that a criteria would be, what sort of utilities might be running underneath it that would be hard to access if they needed a replacement for a different type of line? Yeah, okay. So, Sam?
A lot of similar comments, and also, since you put "in circum circumstances," it seems vague enough to proceed, obviously, so.
Yeah.
One last thing, Rachel, there just came from.
Let me make a comment on Sam's comment. I think we need to double-check with legal and attorney's office that the term "certain circumstances" isn't too vague, that when someone is turned down, they don't sue us, that you gave it to someone else and you wouldn't give it to us. So, we don't have to go into it here, but I think we need to be relatively defining of what will qualify as a special circumstance.
I think that's fair.
Okay, thank you. Bill, your turn.
Thanks. Tyler and Erin, can transformers be subgraded? I think I see this in very dense urban environments sometimes.
Yes, there are instances where transformers are subgrade. They're traditionally in different climate zones than we have. Anytime there's a subgrade surface, it's, there's drainage needs to be considered as part of that process. So, generally, the answer is yes, it's possible. We haven't found a whole lot of case studies about subsurface transformers being utilized in climate zones like this, and the main reason is we need to have accessibility to them 24/7/365. But we continue to look at state of the industry in that regard.
Thanks. Yeah, I'd love for you to look at that in more detail because, you know, using the West End as one example, you know, if you could put subgrade transformers in the alleyway, that wouldn't impede access. It would be aesthetically superior. It wouldn't encroach on anyone's private property. It would be equitable. So, that's something that I would certainly be supportive of, and I would request that you explore.
Yeah, Bill, again, I think something that we would be interested in as staff as well, it's just, you know, especially during winter months, those are spaces that would have to be maintained clear of snow, you know, all winter long as well, but not saying that's insurmountable, just there's some challenges there.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it and bring back those challenges for future council discussion and decisions. I do recall when we had the Black Hills sabotage on their pipelines, you wouldn't believe the people running around Hunter Creek trying to dig out four feet of snow to get down to the meters to be able to really do whatever turnoff they needed to do. So, I don't want to have to clear too, too many of those and think about, and imagine it's a real dry vault that's needed to put a transformer in, too. It's probably fairly expensive. But they're going to look at it, and those sort of things will be coming back as this gets more break. Let's go on to the next topic.
So, switching gears to talk about the upcoming state code changes, just as Aspen has identified electrification of buildings as crucial to meeting emission reduction goals, the state of Colorado is also targeting emissions in buildings and has legislated energy code requirements that apply statewide. State law mandates that cities and counties with building codes must adopt the building codes must adopt the model, the state model code, or a more stringent code whenever adopting or updating building codes. Aspen last updated our codes in 2023 with the adoption of the 2021 codes. That included the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code with Aspen amendments. Currently, if codes were changed, the mandate would be to adopt the 2021 IECC, which we've already done, but we have not adopted the Model Electric and Solar Ready Code, so that would come into effect. If we wait until after July 1st of 2026, then the requirement is going to be the Colorado Low Energy and Carbon Code, which is the state's version of the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code that was amended by a state board to make it specific to Colorado. The city can either adopt the state's model codes or pursue modified codes that, if we feel that changes are needed for Aspen's unique built environment. When we're considering looking at these electrification requirements, they come on this spectrum. Electric ready refers to requiring pre-wiring and panel capacity for a future electric heating or cooling system. That is currently the state minimum. And if we made any changes to our code before July 6th, that would be the requirement. The next level up is considered electric preferred, which requires additional efficiency measures or renewable measures for gas buildings to incentivize buildings to go all-electric. The state Low Energy and Carbon Code would be considered an electric preferred code. And then the most restrictive would be requiring electric, either electric only with some exceptions. Often, communities will allow for gas fireplaces or cooking. And then the most extreme would be electric only with no gas line to the building. Electric ready, the state minimum, does pose its own trade-offs and challenges. While electric ready does make sense for some types of development, staff is concerned that in Aspen, these requirements could lead to significant increases in electric infrastructure, especially in luxury homes. This added infrastructure adds to embodied carbon and cost, but does not actually lead to any emissions reductions. And from what we've heard from electric-ready homes that are currently being built in Picking County, as well as a handful of demolition allotments, we had a limited code that had electric-ready requirements for those demolition allotments. We saw that there was a lot of excess unused transformer capacity, which is expensive and inefficient. It is far preferable for a building to be actually electric and install the systems, which can then lead to the emissions reductions using Aspen's renewable energy grid. Given these challenges, staff proposes that council consider an all-electric or electric preferred code.
Okay, can you put those four choices back up just so we can look at those while we're discussing this? And kind of let me ask a hypothetical question. So what you're saying, in layman's speak, is that if the code required them to be electric-ready, they could install a lot of equipment and stuff, but never use it or not turn it on, so to speak. And so we'd be adding to their construction costs without benefit of the emission reduction?
Right. The equipment, the heat pumps wouldn't be installed, but all of the electric wiring, the electric service side would be sized to receive that.
Okay, thank you.
Don't we have electric-ready provisions in our code as of a couple of years ago already?
Those were the temporary or kind of limited measures for demolition allotments that only applied to demolition allotments that applied before the 2021 code took effect. Once the 2021 code took effect, then we limited electric-ready to only apply to stoves for cooking and clothes dryers.
Okay. Bill, did you have further comments that you want to jump in first, or?
Yeah, I guess I have a big picture comment here, and that's that I'm deeply concerned about the coming cost of electricity and energy in general. We are experiencing unprecedented growth in energy consumption across the world because of the AI revolution. And if you read into this, it's orders of magnitude of energy consumption per capita compared to today's usage that we can expect is coming. And I am concerned that by moving towards the electric-only end of the spectrum, we're limiting the flexibility of people moving between different types of energy if we get into a situation where electricity becomes unaffordable. So I hope everyone considers that. I understand everyone thinks electric is better for the environment. And I understand that's what's driving a lot of these decisions, but at some point in time, if it's unaffordable to maintain your house and you have no optionality but to rip everything out and start over, I don't think that's better for the environment.
Yeah. Thank you, Bill. Other council comments at the table? Sam, or Christine, or John?
I think everybody's, I'm going to say what is expected. I want electric only.
Okay. I have a few questions. Where are we? Are you, sorry, are you?
No, no, that's, that was it.
Done. Where is Colorado and Aspen, as we're having this discussion, on the spectrum of electrification nationally?
Currently, we only require electric-ready for gas stoves, cooking, and clothes drying. And we have some incentives for electrification, most notably that you get an expedited permit review if you're an all-electric building.
But like, how many states or even states municipalities are having this conversation about electrification? Where are we on that spectrum?
I know of several other states and municipalities around the country that are having these conversations, and equal number that are not going anywhere near it. So there's a really wide variety across the country.
Okay, so we're like in the middle. Are we being progressive right now? Are we being reactive?
I would say the state of Colorado is one of the most progressive, and Aspen would be following that.
Okay, thank you. And then what, you've talked about some of them, but just theoretically, what are some of the potential downsides to electrification as, and this is probably a long, detailed conversation, but like if you had to summarize it, what would be some of the downsides to electrification? What would opponents say to something like this?
You know, Bill, Councilmember Guth brought up the potential costs of electricity. And when looking for resiliency, you want to have backup power. So relying too heavily on electricity can not lead to that resiliency.
Okay. That's it. I am supportive, I think, of moving toward electric only, potentially with some exceptions because of, I don't want us to, values-wise, like Sam alluded to, I think that we're all want to do the right thing for the environment and move away from fossil fuels. I also don't want us to have an unattended consequence down the road that we put ourselves in because we didn't give ourselves options here. And that happens when you say only on something.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I generally share Christine's sentiment, and it's just like with all this, it's perceived with caution. You know, sitting up here, it feels like the Aspen Supreme Court as far as things go. But then it's not like anyone, I mean, Bill's bringing up some good points, but it's not like anyone sitting here being like, this doesn't make sense for this reason. This isn't like from different backgrounds of our community. So like I said, the rigorous process that needs, this needs to go through to get to the right level on this is really where I'm looking for, rather than with saying yes. Value-wise, I believe electricity is the best way to move forward for the environment and our future, but with caution.
Yeah. I am going to be in the electric only with exceptions category as well. I'm just not willing to say electric only yet for new, but this is for new construction. And part of it is the generation issue, which Sam alluded to, and the potential cost. It's ironic to see the surge in demand at the same time where all these infrastructure green energy projects were just eliminated out of the current federal budget, you know, and some of them are wind farms that are half-built, who've just lost the other half of their funding. So I want to make sure that we can really keep up with the generation demand. I know we are facing expected increases unless we went in court with Excel and the transmission lines. There's no question that is going to be going up. But other energy sources have been going up pretty significantly as well. And the export of liquefied natural gas out of the United States has been spiking natural gas prices pretty significantly, and we are likely to see more of that. I think that we need to be ready for what, the pendulum swinging, as it were, back and forth to actually caring about climate change again at a federal level and pursuing that. And there simply is no way for me, knowing the wildfire danger, and not just the danger to us, but what it's already doing to the state of Colorado, what we're seeing with drought and changing weather patterns that are just devastating to a lot of communities, we have to move forward what we can. And I don't want to leave John as the only electric-only vote out there, but I would lean in that direction if we were just a little further along. And I think that's something that future councils may take. I think what we want to do also is to think if there's any rewards or recognition or incentives for people to go down these paths and, you know, and try to make it as simple and understandable through our codes and code language that we can. Okay, next topic.
Right, Rachel, just to be clear.
Oh, go ahead, Bill. Sorry, sorry, Bill. Go ahead.
I didn't really close my thoughts. I'm not supportive of any of these options. I'm fine with keeping things the way that they are. And I don't have enough technical expertise to be able to explain this, but multiple mechanical engineers have told me that electric heating, particularly for large spaces, will never be as efficient as fossil fuel heating. So I think everyone needs to keep that in mind, is that there is a reason that people haven't used electricity to heat large homes and large buildings. And heat pumps are getting better, but they are by no means anywhere near as efficient per unit of energy, whatever that might be called.
Thank you, Bill. Next question, and sorry I missed you there, Bill, too. I apologize for that. Okay. Next item.
So we've been talking about the growing electric demand. All-electric buildings, as well as electric-ready buildings, are increasing service sizes. And this is compounded in Aspen's context due to already high electric demands for amenities in large luxury homes. Implications of this larger electric demand include larger service sizes, larger and additional transformers, and as well as oversizing transformers to meet all-electric demands or electric-ready demands. This oversizing happens because there currently aren't any limits on capacity, and everyone would like to have more than enough. When this happens system-wide, we are seeing impacts on electric line losses and continuous standby energy, which is inefficient. The Electrification Task Force has considered these impacts and have identified one possible solution to be electric service capacity limits for residential buildings.
So you're essentially talking almost about REMP, to say that there is an electricity budget per house, energy budget per house, that will come from the city's electric system. Is there any allowance for if they do self-generation on-site, so that if they had solar panels as well, and they do a power wall, would, you know, we wouldn't, or would we, limit the energy they could develop themselves and use themselves on-site and not draw off the city system?
Typically, the service would be sized per code to take all of their demands if their self-generation was off. So it doesn't necessarily change your service size to the transformer. So it would be difficult to take that into account and essentially subtract that off, if that makes sense.
Okay, so you're saying that the transformer has to be the same size no matter what, and should their solar systems fail or a future owner turn them off, that transformer has to be big enough to carry the full load?
To serve the entire load of the property.
So there's really no, no way to divvy out. So how would you know if someone has exceeded their budget if they're given a budget, but they're hooked into the transformer? And say it's a random number like 30 as their cutoff, and they use 32. Would they get something in their electric bill telling them they use too much energy? Would they be shut off? Or, I mean, how does that process through? And what, again, was, okay, well now I am doing three more appliances you never saw, but I'm powering them myself. Are we allowing them to do that?
I can try and answer that a little bit. So in terms of budget, what the Electrification Task Force was considering is a limit on your panel capacity. And so that would be a hard limit on the power that a customer would be able to draw. And so that would set the baseline of what they'd be able to design around for their electric demands.
Okay.
Anecdotally, just to give you a sense of what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
If you were building a 1,500-square-foot house, I think the industry standard right now is something like a 200-amp service, which is, again, that limit on the panel capacity for a house. One of the demolition allotment projects that were on this energy-ready kind of requirement that we tried out with a small number of projects, fairly big home, our 15-zone district, so probably, let's just say a 7,500-square-foot gross home, probably to be conservative to that, with all exterior amenities and planning for future, future energy use for heating and cooling and everything else they had going on the property. Size of transformers, plural, for a single home, they needed two, for a 3,200-amp service, which is 16 times sort of the service capacity for that home. And so this is anecdotal. This is one case in point. But I think you multiply that across the city of Aspen landscape and the kinds of homes that are being built here and the amenity expectations and sort of planning for future energy consumption. And we're talking about service sizes, transformer capacities that are massive, particularly if we're going with an electric-ready sort of code. And I think that that's where this question comes from. Please know that nobody sitting at this table thinks that this is a small question. We, this was the one I think we were sort of most thoughtful about bringing to or not. But I think as we look at the sum of the issues that are here, it is this question about looking and looking across our landscape, looking at future energy needs, looking at design of future homes, this is an essential question, we think, because it starts to give us some answers to some of the other questions that are being asked tonight about how we might respond from a code perspective. If the answer to this question is no, that creates a path If the answer to this question is no, that creates a path for us on these other questions. If the answer is yes, that there might be some space to consider this, I think it brings other potential alternatives to some of the other questions that you're being asked this evening, as we bring specific responses to those things.
Thank you for that. Bill had his hand up first.
Go ahead.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Thanks so much. This is such a bananas question in my mind. You know, Ben, you used the example of this house that had a 3,200-amp service, and I can guarantee you that they do not want to have a 3,200-amp service. That house, without the impositions of the electric readiness for future heating and cooling being all-electric, this is probably a 1,000-amp service. That's probably the last thing that they wanted to do. We are asking or we're promoting to have fully-electric houses, and then we're saying, but you can't have enough electricity to do it. And you can't have enough electricity for future-proofing for something that may be beneficial or necessary for you in the future. You know, let's say somebody gets sick and they need to have supplementary oxygen systems put into their house, or some other kind of medical device, and we're going to have a hard cap on how much electricity that they can use in the house, and we have no optionality for another energy source? This is the most bonkers question. I'm so opposed to this. You can't have your cake and eat it too, in my mind, on this one. I'm totally opposed to this notion.
Are you sure, Bill?
I've never been more sure about anything in my life.
Sorry, I had to do that. Thank you for speaking clearly and directly to the issue, and we'll discuss it further at the table, and keep going. Thanks.
Thank you.
John?
Now, again, going back to when Crest Butte passed their all-electric ordinance for new development, I was super excited and asked, why couldn't we do it here? And this was precisely the reason why, because we have residents that develop properties that don't happen in Crest Butte, right? It just, they don't develop the way that clients do here. So, I think we should, this goes hand-in-hand with everything else we're talking about. And I think staff has been working on this for years now, and they wouldn't have brought it before us unless they were, they thought it was an issue that needed to be talked about. And I do support limiting electric capacity for residential buildings. I think this talk about smart homes is a misnomer.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Sam, ping-pong over to you.
Yeah, I'm almost afraid to answer this in the sense that, like, this seems like something they would do in third-world countries. It's like, limit, it's like, but like, once again, I speak from a point of like a level of ignorance on this sort of thing, because, like, I don't know 100% if this would have an adverse effect on everyone if the limit was so high that it just didn't matter, and it would have to be bananas for it to go over it. But it just seems very strange to be like, you have to go electric, and by the way, we're also going to limit you to this amp amount, and by the way, that amp amount is something that, like, you might go over for non-nefarious reasons. So, I think this one would need to be defended a lot heavier as to why this was needed for me to want to support this.
I wanted to mention that City of Aspen does have a history of putting some limits in place. You spoke to REMP and our current cap just on exterior energy uses. There's also currently a limit that the water utility has set for a single-family residential ECU utilization, and Tyler could speak more to this, but it's really looking at capping that top 1%, 5% that are on the extremely-high end-use, rather than looking at the way that 95% of homes are using their electricity.
Yeah. You know, I'm going to weigh in on this a little bit, and just to broaden the conversation before your comments, if you don't mind, Christine. But I look at this as, I'm more of a yes as well, but I would like to see what it looks like formulated and how we think it'll play out, and then you can make, we can make final decisions at that point. I do have concerns like others do. But I look at this as not about how much energy capacity we're capping someone out. It's like, how much energy demand do we want these new residences to have? And we're trying to cap the demand that they can put onto our system. And REMP is exactly that. There was an energy budget for a house, and people have survived. And, you know, the thing is, you know, to me, it inspires trade-offs that the homeowners may make among many newer, fancier, higher-ended amenities. And if it's the progression of science and technology is anything like it's been in the past, what some people may want now is an amenity, and I'll say electric curtains that go down and up automatically, like we have in this room, they may run on far less energy in the future as these things go further along. And I think that we may see more of that. We'll have to see more demands in some areas, and we'll see more efficiencies in what products use. It's kind of like when Energy Star first started, and you suddenly saw your refrigerators and your washing machines and things like that get a lot more energy-efficient in their initial construction. But beyond that, this is about what we want our community to be like, as opposed to what others would like to impose on our community in terms of their wants and needs have to be satisfied. And, you know, it's an awkward situation, and it's awkward to say it, but just because there's unlimited dollars out there for some people to do something, doesn't mean that the rest of the system that we all pay into, and we all pay our utility bills, needs to be increased to serve that. You know, part of this demand on energy for AI and servers and things like this is actually hitting the regular ratepayer in their pocketbook heavily, because someone else is using too much. And so, it does have an impact back to everyone else. If I'm using what a normal resident uses and economizes, and then, but my rates are going up 10% a year to create more production for someone who has a 9,000-square-foot house, who wants to use as much energy as five, six houses, then that's the unfairness of it. There's both sides of this. And so, I'd like to see us move in this direction. I'd like to set it as nothing that's undoable or punitive as a level of what that capacity is. I think it needs to be carefully thought out and justified, but it's just, we're in, oh, God, the best example is our Shima Cop Japan. They built the sister-city big swim hall while it was a go-go years, and the original architects had this glass enclosure, which it is glass-enclosed, about five stories high, but they had it going up 10 stories of glass walls to make a cathedral out of this. And they finally had to come back and say, we can't afford, you know, this is, look at how much energy they would use. And I just don't want us creating product that, for a variety of reasons, could become obsolete when that energy's not available, or when people are looking at it differently, or that puts a burden on the rest of the electric users in our community. So, I think we need to balance that picture out very carefully when we bring it forward.
I think there's a very, I think there's a contradictory argument to what you just said, Rachel, about lower users subsidizing higher users. And I think that the way that our tier system is set up on both the water and electric utilities, it's actually quite the opposite that happens, is that those who consume more subsidize those who consume less right now, because the tiers are, as you consume more, are so much more expensive. So, I don't think that that's factual, what you just said, and I think that-
Yeah, I think, I appreciate the counterbalance, and we could go back and forth on it. It all really depends on what we're buying our energy for from others in the future, because we're not producing our own energy. We're having to compete and buy it against others. So, I do think that there is something that affects all of our larger costs. And we're on a tier system for both water and electric to try to reduce usage so we don't exceed our own supply. And there is a reason why they're paying more for those higher volumes. We don't have the supply to continue to do that at an unlimited basis. But again, you know, we're a mixed board, and we have mixed opinions on it, and we want to look at it carefully. And you've heard the comments on this one. Let's move on to the next. I'm sorry.
No, it's Christine.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Everyone, thank you for helping keep me on track.
I am also supportive of proceeding with caution, and Sam's words on this. Electricity is a shared utility, and even renewable, I don't think that means that the biggest users, the most egregious users at the top should be able to take as much as they can, or should. And I think exploring limitations also sends a message to future development on that as well, is that, you know, we're urging you to move to this renewable resource. That doesn't mean do it as big and as bold as you can, that we want to do it responsibly.
Okay. So, just to summarize, it sounds like we have a council majority to continue to research, do stakeholder outreach, and come back with potential appropriate limits.
And to the extent you can explore the pro and cons of some of the issues that have been brought up in this discussion, I think that would be valuable.
Our final question for you is around existing buildings and what requirements will be imposed on major renovations. Aspen sees relatively few permits for new construction and far more applications for renovations to existing buildings, so electrifying existing buildings over time will be necessary to meet emission targets. The state code minimum for major renovations is going to be that electric-ready that we already discussed and some of the unintended consequences that might come as a result. Even if a building only electrifies part of its total energy usage, that can still have large gains on the overall emissions reductions, as opposed to that electric-ready that's just installing the infrastructure but not reducing the emissions at that time. It's just setting up for a future use. So, if directed by council, staff would like to bring back options for major renovations that would go beyond electric-ready and provide for partial electrification or other electric requirements on these major renovations.
Anyone have any clarifying questions on that, or want to weigh in first? Bill's hand's not up yet. I will go ahead with, yes, I would like to move to the partial electrification option for major renovations. And I don't know, I want you to tell us this at the next step, is there a difference between what that might be for retail, commercial versus residential? You know, I think of how much renovation we have in the core, so those work for me. And then, you know, what the pros and cons are when we actually get to it, people have them. But I think we want to move forward more than electric-ready, because that, again, starts to be, we're asking you to install a lot of equipment and then not really use it, and that just doesn't make sense to me at all. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to do as much as possible, so, more than the state minimum, for sure. Partial electrification would be great.
Okay. Sam?
A lot of the same comments, and then, again, a sincere hope that when you talk to people that are looking to do this type of work, that you come to, hopefully, a healthy compromise of saying, like, this stuff makes sense, this stuff does not. How do we get to the point where the stuff that does not make sense does, working in the right direction, but in the dumbest possible way, looking to not have these adverse unintended consequences come from stuff like this? And I think that will be done through talking with people that are actually doing this type of work and are going to be affected most by it, because, yeah.
Okay. Bill, I see your hand now. Your turn.
Thanks. Yeah, this is another one that I really am struggling with. You know, given that I'm sort of been responsible for a large renovation of an existing commercial building in the core as we speak, there is no way that we could have electrified our heating system in this building. It'd be absolutely impossible. The entire building is set up, predicated on using natural gas to heat water and circulate that water throughout the building. Electric boilers, even our own city councils, the most electric proponents have realized that it doesn't make sense to convert to electric boilers. At the Wheeler Opera House, we went with gas boilers for that very reason. Staff made the case that it didn't make sense to go with electric boilers, and John, even you voted for that one, if I recall correctly. This is really dangerous, and it's going to have a lot of unintended consequences that are not sensible. This is really just trying to signal our virtues, and I don't know what the state minimums are, so I'm uncomfortable saying that I will even agree to meet those, but I'm very uncomfortable with this scenario.
Yeah.
And wouldn't do no more than the state minimum, if that even.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Bill. I think, as was the preamble coming into this, we would be required to move up to the state-level code on some of this if we don't adopt our own. And so, that's just part of it. Something I think that would be very helpful for all of us if the term "partial electrification" was made a little more clear, because that, you know, to me, it sounds like on a building like yours, Bill, this could be, you know, some of the building would be the partial electrification, but we're not taking out your gas-water boiler system. I don't know what that means, and I think everyone needs a little more clarity on that in the code and as they're considering the code. But, you know, when someone's doing a major renovation, you're going to live with that building for, what, another 20, 30, 40 years or so? This is why they do a renovation. So, we'll be living with the emissions of that building for that period of time, and that is our only opportunity to steer its design and its eventual redevelopment into something that's going to be sufficient for meeting our energy goals and climate change goals. So, I'm, again, I said already, I'm for partial electrification, but I'd like to know more and, you know, it probably would, I'm assuming it would depend on the building and its existing structure and what they're doing, as to what systems we would be asking them to actually update. It's not just a blanket, well, you're renovating, you got to do all this, as much as you're renovating, your systems are like this, your building is like this, your envelope is like this, and this is what we would recommend for your partial electrification, something along those lines.
Yeah, two comments to respond to that.
Please.
When we're talking about partial electrification, that's often looking at electrifying the majority of the heating and cooling loads, so potentially 80%, 90%. Oftentimes, that last 10% is where you see a lot of larger equipment being needed and additional burdens. So, rather than requiring a building to go all the way up to 100%, requiring the 80% and then leaving their existing boiler for backup heat and to reach that last 10% is most likely what we would be coming back to council. We're going to do some more investigation on the topic. We've actually applied for a grant with the Colorado Energy Office to look into the topic further. Additionally, with major renovations, it is really important to have thresholds that make sense, as you were alluding to, and that'll also be those specifics that we look forward to bringing back.
Yeah. Just say, before everyone else does, this is going to really involve and create a lot of public interest, and a lot of support, and a lot of questions, and a lot of disagreement, perhaps. So, I think on this sort of thing, it really is good to perhaps do a little scenario-building of, you know, what does this mean? What will it mean when this code comes into play if we had a couple of different hypothetical types of renovations? And so, we can get a little sense. I mean, because even from what you said, it's reassuring in a way, but it also makes me think, wow, they're going to- me think, wow, they're going to have to keep this really big boiler room and the gas line, and will there be a minimum service? They have to buy X amount of gas a month, no matter what. I mean, it just, what does that mean? And how do you connect the electricity into the system that's literally running through the rooms, as opposed to, you know, the existing? So, you know, just a little more, and maybe we all have different opinions of what partial electrification would mean, but it's good to see it in practicality. And then, Christine, and then I think John has something else to add, or no?
Yeah, I can...
I'll go ahead. I think that's fair. Bill, thank you for your perspective on this, because as we're hearing, and you've alluded to it, the outreach, I don't know what I don't know, we don't know what we don't know, and this is complicated. So, coming back with some of those examples of the pros and cons would be really helpful to make this decision. I think there will have to be exceptions in something like a partial electrification, or at least on the limited information I heard tonight, just on projects, our own Wheeler Opera House, I guess, that couldn't move forward. So, informing the next discussion with some of those outlying situations would be helpful.
Okay, is that, everyone has weighed in? John?
Yeah, I also want to thank Bill, too. I think he brings up a lot of points that wouldn't be brought up normally if he wasn't here. But I do think that whatever we can do to accelerate the transition away from fossil fuels and lowering our emissions is exactly what we should be doing, and I want to thank staff for all the time you put in on this. I know it's been a long haul, and thanks for continuing to work on it.
Yeah, and I know it's been a long meeting already. Are there any other questions or comments or thoughts that have come up? Ben?
If I could just make a quick comment, I think the comments all tonight have been very valuable and important to us. I will say, you know, I think our approach that we've taken, and this is with council direction a couple of years ago, when you were going through the update of the new energy code, you know, I think there were peer communities that were going really fast down this road, and we knew that there were too many questions that we didn't have the answers to when that was happening. And I will say, I think the work of the team that's been involved in this with consultants who, I think we've sought out really knowledgeable consultants who are looking at this, you know, the details of these questions, but also the kind of broad context of this, of how this is playing out national and state levels. We've seen Berkeley, California have to backpedal on some rapidly implemented codes, you know, and I think that's the last thing that we want to do, is get this wrong. So, please just know, council, that as we pursue what we think are difficult, challenging questions, that staff is seeking out balanced responses that are thoughtful, that kind of are responding to these state requirements, but are trying to understand how this stuff plays out in the very specific context that we're operating off of. So, please know that that's the way that we're approaching our work.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that, too. And perhaps you could reach back out to some of those experts and give them the feedback you've received, and say, you know, what is the narrative, or what is the response they would have to some of the concerns, because I think that will really help us all going forward, and explaining it to the public particularly.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, council, for our policy input, really helpful. With the guidance that you've provided tonight, we will circle our kind of knowledge special or subject matter experts and the folks that are working on this. We will do very in-depth outreach, we've already done a lot, and for these really specific topics, now that we have the guidance from council, to come back with these, we'll get even more specific on those potential solutions, pros and cons, and really, really in-depth outreach, and over the next year, bring back policy options for council to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That sounds really good. And thank you all the staff in the back who've worked on this, who've contributed, who helped put Ben and these guys up on the firing line, and we appreciate that, all your time. Council, that's all on our regular work session agenda, other than items published in the most recent information update, and so, I just wanted to mention one for council. We did have an outline of the grant review program as it came back from our work session with input from council, and I think that all looked very good, but I have asked Pete if he could give us the information, and you and John may have it in the back of your mind somewhere, about what was the total pie allocated to the arts, not human services, but to the arts historically over the past few years, since a little before the Wheeler RET changed, and then post-Wheeler RET. You know, I was in the audience, and I think you were, maybe Christine, the night we were sworn in, and the last council did the grants, and we heard some concerns by people who felt they didn't get what they needed to, or were changed, and you always will get that, I understand, I'm not trying to say you grow the pie endlessly, but I'd just like to see what we did modify. Clearly, the grants program outlined limiting the grant size out of the Aspen area, immediate area, and so, that shifts some money back up to this area for funding. And so, it was just a simple question, which I didn't have the background to, and I wanted to get that information, and everyone can think a little bit about, should we grow that pie a little larger, or is it sufficient for this year? But I don't want to send the volunteers off to do their work, and then after the fact say, well, we should have increased the pie by a few more percent. So, just wanted to throw that out there for you all. Okay? Did anybody else have anything they wanted to bring up from any of our info memos? Or, okay, and Bill, did you have any closing parting shots for us or anything?
Nothing, thanks.
Hey, I hope you feel better, and thanks for participating this way, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, didn't want to get you guys sick. I think I'm on the up, so.
Oh, good, good, good. Okay, so, we are done. Thank you, Veras fruits TV, and we'll see you all tomorrow night. We will have an executive session, and so, I think we will probably be bringing some dinner in.
Find you something.
Yeah, I think it looks like a little bit of a longer meeting tomorrow.